A quorum of members are present. At this time, I'll ask Tom Fraser to direct us in prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I thank you so much for this day that you've blessed us with. I thank you for allowing each of us to together here in fellowship to enjoy food and family and one another's company. And God, I'm grateful for the school board that we have and all the many hearts that work so diligently and tirelessly, day in and day out, to provide an education for the students here in this community. And Lord, I ask that you bless each student, bless each family, and bless each decision that is made here tonight, and help it to be in accordance with your will. And it's in your son's holy and precious name that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Tom. At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board at this time regarding a specific item on tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. I think we have Mr. Jeff Neal, who signed up to speak tonight.
Can I turn this around and talk to? I wanted to talk to teachers, not them. I just want to say that you are very much appreciated by our Godly community. Even in a climate of confusion and discord with social media, I want to make sure that you hear loud and clear that you are very much appreciated. As a community, we will continue to work to increase salaries, like passing the VATRE and using every penny for teacher and staff salaries, again, despite any confusion or discord that may come from other sources. Our community will continue to try to provide you with the best teaching facilities we can. This school is a great example of that. And most of all, we will continue to trust you with the most important thing in our lives: our children. I think sending our kids to you is the biggest example of our actions speaking louder than our words. To tell you, we believe in you, we support you, and we appreciate you, thank you. In closing, just a quick announcement for teachers and staff. I think I have a deal brokered between Stonewater Church and Godly Nutrition for tees for the whole staff, the week of Teacher Appreciation Week. Just wanted to make that quick announcement, so it's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
At this time... At this time, we'll go into recognition.
Okay, principals, if you'll come up, the first thing we'd like to do is recognize our individual Campus Teachers of the Year. So each principal will come up and recognize their teacher.
I think we have a short video to show before...
First, alright. Mr. Mayor, is this the video we talked about earlier? It is. So while we're waiting, I'll just give you guys a little preview. This is our... We made a video to recognize teachers a couple of years ago called "God Made a Teacher: Why God Made a Teacher." And we've updated that now with some updated pictures, because some of those pictures were a little old with masks and that sort of thing. So we wanted to show this for you guys, because we really love this video.
And on the day that God looked down from the children's planet in paradise and said, "I need a caretaker," so God made a teacher. God said, "I need somebody willing to get up before dawn, drive a bus, teach all day in the classroom, drive a bus again, eat supper, and then go to town and stay hasty at night and be in the school," so God made a teacher. I need somebody strong enough and quite roomful of adolescence, and yet gentle enough to give loads to a kidney person. Somebody to call kids in from recess, paying contactless parents, come home hungry because their lunch was spent opening up bill carters and lady's bills and wiping faces. Someone who stayed after school until the last hand, if they will, till the last question had been asked and smiled. At the last time leaves the room and wonders about all the things they learned, so God made a teacher. It has to be someone who loves jobs and is hard on the mind. Someone who sees the potential in each youthful child. Someone that will give and give and give small, even when their patience is worn thin. Someone that will relentlessly encourage frustrated learners, even when the stage calls them a loser. They'll prioritize, tell them, "You're more than a pit," so God made a teacher. He said they must have fierce beliefs in kids, never turning a blind eye to justice and prejudice, always standing up for what's right, turning the most difficult and awful situation into teachable moments, knowing that in their future and humanity, so God made a teacher. He said, "I need someone strong enough and there's a person who should govern the hour of the un公 public and the occasional condemnation of upset parent, and know that their room is the safest place in the world for their children. A person who loves without condition, who gives without reward, that plans and builds, ready to review, rework, and rebound the lessons for a while. Someone tireless in pursuit of work, so God made a teacher. Someone that will get a letter or phone call during the end of their career from a student if they have so many years to go. Having them have a change, shape, or open their minds to limit those possibilities, and know that there's no greater calling than to be what God made a teacher. He needed someone who dedicated their life, made every decision in the best interest of the kids, and made it, so God made a teacher."
Okay, at this time, I think principals now are going to come up and recognize their individual Campus Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. So the Godly Middle School Teacher of the Year certainly fits the mold of what was described there. We are pleased to announce our Special Education and Content Mastery Teacher, Ms. Astrid Jones.
We decided our Teacher of the Year was selected as Bethany Van Wart, first grade. She's not able to be here, so she's on FaceTime with us.
Can she see us?
Yes.
The sixth-grade Campus Teacher of the Year is Ms. Andrea Wood, and she teaches sixth-grade math.
The RB Godly Teacher of the Year is Ms. Hannah Chastain. She's our third-through-fifth resource teacher.
And for Pleasant View Elementary, our Teacher of the Year is Jess Mosier, and she teaches fourth grade ELR and Social Studies here at Pleasant View. And I'm not sure who let Flood go last, but it's probably not a good idea.
For Godly High School, we are proud to announce that our Teacher of the Year is our Math Resource Teacher, Ms. Lori Loomis.
You all want to come down and get a group picture?
Want us to hear it back down there?
So now, from those primary teachers and secondary teachers, Mr. Carnes is now going to announce the district primary and secondary teachers of the year.
All right. So awesome tonight, and so this is really cool to be able to do this. And so I need a drum roll for this. So we have our elementary teacher of the year. Our elementary teacher of the year is Bethany Van Wart. And of course, Bethany's not here. We'll take a screenshot. Yeah. Very good. Awesome. Okay. And then our secondary teacher of the year for the district is Lori Loomis. Y'all want her picture?
Yeah. 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 Okay. Are we going to walk around every time? So I think you're probably going to need a picture. Yeah. Okay, yeah, we got to get it. So, very good.
Okay, yes, I'm going to take my picture. I have some on here. Hey, Jeff, can you step along? I know. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I'm going to take my picture. Hi, I'm here. I have some on here. Hey, Jeff, can you step along? I know. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I'm going to take my picture. I'm like, hi, I'm here. I have some on here. Hey, Jeff, can you step along? I know. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Yes, I'm going to take my picture. I'm like, hi, I'm here. I have some on here. Hey, Jeff, can you step along? I know. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Flood, looks like next we are recognizing our Taffy students. State qualifiers. Come on down.
Before we do that, do you mind if I say a word, please?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to take your minute, if you don't mind. Hey, so on behalf of the board, I would like to give an extra special thank you to all of our teachers. They are the main people that allow the district to perform at the level that we do, that interact with the kids, that enable the district to excel as it does. So again, I know there's... It's always trying time, having different situations, whatever. Sometimes, again, as Mr. Neal mentioned, social media can be a pain in the backside, but still, it's one of those things, you persevere, you work your way through it, and again, it doesn't go unrecognized. I really do appreciate it. Again, from all of us at the board, I really appreciate what you do. Thank you. Anybody else want to?
So some of you teachers may have noticed, I made a New Year's resolution that I was going to sign all of your boards and put a quote and sign it. So some of you might have walked in and seen some strange quotes on your boards. And I haven't got to everybody, because it actually takes a long time. But last week, I was at the high school, and I signed Mr. Walla's board. And Mr. Walla is our robotics and drone teacher. So I signed... I put a quote up there, signed it, and as I was leaving, I looked over, saw that he had a big pile of t-shirts. So I put the t-shirt up, it said, "Godly Drone Squadron." I said, "Well, we haven't had one of these before," so I went back and I put, "P.S. Always order an extra t-shirt for the superintendent." And I was just messing with him. Mr. Walla and I have a great, great relationship. So sure enough, the next day, I get a bag, and there's a t-shirt in there. He had put a quote on there, and it said, "To most people, the sky's the limit. To pilots, the sky's home." And I loved that quote, and it made me think of teachers, and just how hard you guys work, and the courage you bring to class every day. You know, some people do great things every once in a while. You guys change lives every day. And I just wanted to say that. We appreciate you guys. We support you guys. Ignore the white noise out there, because you are very supported by the school board, by your administration, and especially by this community. So thank you for everything you do. Now, Mr. Flood, we will recognize hopefully some future teachers.
Yeah, so we're really excited. One of the new programs that we have opened up in our programs of study is our Future Educators Program. We have partnered with TEA in what's called Grow Your Own. We know that teacher shortage is one of the things all schools are facing. So what TEA has done is partner with schools to create programs that kids can go straight from graduating high school to paraprofessional jobs in classrooms, straight to teachers. So kids that grew up in Godly can work in Godly and can retire from Godly one day, hopefully, would be the goal. Part of the requirements are pretty strict for our teacher that does that, so I'm going to introduce and welcome her in just a minute, but I want to say just a big, huge thank you to Ms. Dana Burke right here. She has taken that on, and she has had to pilot a curriculum with TEA this year, that she has had to meet in a cohort four times a year throughout the year, pilot their program, and give feedback as to the goods and the bads and what needs to be changed. And one of those requirements was we had to start a Texas Association of Future Educators. So we had no idea what to expect, or where it would go, or what it would do. And lo and behold, we had multiple state qualifiers and two that have qualified for the national competition in Orlando coming up...
Uh, June.
In June, yeah. Why is she trying to stop me? I know. In June. So we're just really excited about all the things they've done and the work they do. All of these kids travel, and they go into classrooms at the other elementary schools and work with teachers and support teachers, and teachers get to teach them how to work in the classroom. So these are people that could be our future educators, you know, working here in Godly SD. So without further ado, I just want to welcome Ms. Dana Burke to introduce these kiddos.
He knows I don't like the microphone, so he just told you all the things I was going to have to tell you. So thank you, Mr. Flood. So these ladies have worked really hard this year. We started the year. I handed them a list of competitive events, and they were told to find one that they thought would fit their interests, and they were able to find projects to work on. They planned, they created, they presented, and competed with them. And so everyone that I'm going to announce today is a state qualifier, and so we did go to state with my first group, and we were very excited about that. Trinity Roden and Ashton Anglin both did an interactive bulletin board. Neither one of them are here tonight. They have previous engagements, but I did want to recognize them. Zeta Diaz and Abigail Phelps, they both created an interactive bulletin board. Brianna Raskon. Brianna wrote and illustrated a Spanish children's book. Carson Wheeler, she wrote and illustrated a children's book. And then this last group I'm going to announce altogether, because they were one group. They did parliamentary procedure, and they can run a meeting from start to finish, and they're really good at it. So Allison Stinson, Olivia Henderson, Avery Askew, Carly Bundock, and Catherine Whitfield. And then I would like to say also that out of this group, we did have two groups to qualify for nationals. So Carson Wheeler, and then Zeta and Abigail, they get to keep going, and so we will take them to Florida in June to compete with their projects there. So we're really excited about that.
So our second one, we also have a brand-new art teacher. So in my tenure as principal at high school, our art class has been like Defense Against the Dark Arts from Harry Potter, in the sense we've had to replace it every year, but we're excited, because Ms. LeBeau's staying. So we're really excited about all the work she's done this year. We are really excited. Ms. LeBeau comes with a lot of experience from Everman, but she has started this VASE program, and she took a large group of students. VASE is a visual arts scholastic event where they get to show their work off and have to write stories and go in front of judges and speak about their artwork. They do that up in Arlington, and she had several kids medal. So we're just appreciative of the hard work she does with these kids. She actually took a big group of them to the Main Streets Arts Festival last weekend, so our art kids can go and experience something downtown. So they had a great time there. So without further ado, I'll let Ms. LeBeau describe our kiddos.
All right. I wanted to let you know that the interview process is a little bit more challenging in that 50% is based off of their artwork and 50% is on how well they interview, on the how and the why. I do want to list a couple of... Actually, five students that weren't able to attend. Oscar Castro, Trinity Lively, Ellie Navarro, Brooklyn Royal, and Marley Samuels. And the people that we do have is Jalen Hicks, Heather Jordan, Kiara Mungia, Gisele Pantoja,
We have one more group for you tonight, so we're really excited about this one, too. This is our brand-new theater arts teacher that we've had this year. I have been lucky enough to be friends with Ms. DeBose, going to church with her for several years, and I was able to finally lure her from Joshua ISD last year, so we're really excited about that. But she has put on four different performances this year already, which I've only seen one in my four years here before this, and she has a fifth one coming up at the end of the year. So she has really taken this program to new heights and really growing the theater arts program, so we're excited about that. So without further ado, I will let Ms. Christine DeBose talk about her one-act play kids.
He told me only to talk for like 30 seconds to a minute, and I don't know if I can do that, but that's okay. So we performed The Actor's Nightmare this year, and it was so much fun. But it was not a nightmare at all, because it was just... It was so much fun. We had a blast. We laughed every rehearsal, and there were things... You know, we had kids... Forgive me, this was all within the play, but we had kids ripping off their pants, because that was a part of the play, and jumping into trashcans, and it was just so much fun, and they had a blast. And so anyways, without further ado, I want to... It was all done very well. It was not inappropriate at all, taking off their pants. I just needed to get that out there. Anyways, okay. So you guys, come on up. All right, so this is Kat Tucker, and she played Meg, and she got honorable mention, And they're all wearing their medals around their necks that they got. And then next is Noah Nepper, and he played Henry, and many other different personalities, and he won honorable mention, All-Star Cast as well. And this is Hannah Smith, and she won All-Star Tech Cast, All-Star Tech Crew, and she was amazing. She did our sound like crazy. And this is Lily Martin, and Lily Martin played Ellen, as well as many other personalities as per The Nightmare. And so she did amazing. And then this is Brooklyn Day, who I believe had a two-to-three-page monologue, who just killed it, and she won All-Star Cast. And that's it.
We appreciate everyone being here. Thank you guys very much. We would love for as many of you who want to to stay for the regular business part of the board meeting, but we also... I also know that we've got a lot of small kids out there, and they're losing their patience. So if you would like to sneak out as we transition to the business portion of the meeting, feel free.
And now we'll go into stakeholder communication.
Okay, we'll start with S&amp;P. Robert, you want to bring us up? How many cranes you got going over there, Robert?
Five cranes. Good evening. My name is Robert McNutt, project superintendent with Satterfield and Ponteckus Construction, working on Phase Two at Godly High School. Just wanted to give you guys an update of where we are on construction with Phase Two. We've got some photos here. So we'll just look through the photos, and I'll speak to the progress there. This is... This is the 50-yard line of the, from the football field and just wanted to show you guys here that we're waterproofing the exterior wall there underneath what will be the aluminum bleachers in the front. And then up at the top, if you look to the right, you can see the concrete raker beams that have been cast. Those will be supporting the precast seating where the fixed seating will sit up there for the stadium. This is looking at the CTE building from the north side and looking at the northwest corner of the CTE building. You can see down at the yellow areas where the exterior walls have been framed and sheathed. And you can also see up on level four, they're installing the decking here in this photo and getting the decking down for the fourth level of the CTE, which is the top level of the CTE building. If you look over to the left, you can see that the walls have been cast for the ramp, which is going to be the ADA accessible ramp that will get people in and out of the building there on the north side. In the CTE on level one, you can see that there's, this is actually two photos on each side here. You can see that the walls that have been sheet rocked there on level one. And we are continuing, or we have completed all the overhead mechanical and plumbing, which, let's change the screen. There you go. The above ceiling, the mechanical systems and the plumbing systems have been installed in the, on level one in the CTE. Here's just another picture. This is what's going to be the floral shop right there. So the frames have been installed throughout, the hollow metal frames have been installed throughout level one as well. And going up to the second floor of the CTE, this is section D or the north half of the CTE, looking down the hallway. This is looking for both directions. On the left side, you're looking to the south and on the right side, you're looking to the north. Can see that the walls in section D have been framed. You can see overhead mechanical systems going in as well as plumbing going in overhead as well. Can also see that the fireproofing has been installed in the, on the deck and the structure for level two. This is section E of the south half of the CTE building on the second floor. Stud framing is going on in this area as well as the, you can see above the fireproofing has been completed and the plumbing and mechanical systems are going in overhead in this area as well. Going over to the arena, you can see that the, this picture was taken a couple of days ago in preparation for this, to get this slideshow over to you guys. And a couple more trusses have already been infilled on this, on this arena. So the big trusses that span across that open area above the seating and playing surface of the arena are being installed. You can see those going in from, from right to left here in this picture. And also since we last looked, all the steel around the perimeter, which would be the circulation area, has been installed. So you can see that around the, the north, the west, and the south side of the arena, which would be the second level. Just another view looking from the other side. You can see kind of what I was talking about there. The decking down on the bottom half of the picture would be the second level circulation and then the roof trusses going in along the top. Also in, next to the arena, we've got area F, which we started drilling piers and digging for grade beams over there. So that'll be the foundation for area F, which is going to be the visitor's side seating, promenade deck, as well as some additional athletic locker rooms and a concession stand over on the visitor's side. So that was a update through where we are currently on phase two. Did you guys have any questions?
Got several for you, sir. So while we're thankful for the rain we got, how bad did it set you back?
For, over the weekend?
Yes, sir.
No, we were able to proceed this morning without a delay.
Good. Okay. Secondly, substantial completion date for the CTE and then also for the arena.
Okay. So mid, mid-December, so currently we're tracking for December 11th for the CTE building and for the arena and the rest, the remainder of the buildings on the visitor's side or the east side of the football field, March 6th.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Robert? All right. Thank you, sir. Reader, what do you have for us on phase three?
All right. Good evening. Jeff Stevens with Reader Construction, project manager, here to talk about phase three, the Fine Arts Edition. So I promised last time I would, oh, this is not the right slideshow. So I don't know how this happened. Either way, a lot has changed since these photos. So I'll give you just a little bit of a verbal update. So we poured, we poured a portion of the area A grade beams. Area A ends up being the kitchen expansion. Poured those late last week. We poured the remainder of area A and about 90% of area B. Area B ends up being the art rooms and the second floor addition. We poured those today. So rain didn't slow us down. And then we're planning to pour area C, which is the storm shelter, Thursday. Once we finish, you know, and obviously tomorrow, weather permitting, we're going to start wrecking forms, backfilling. Once we finish pouring the storm shelter grade beams, we'll be able to wreck those forms and we'll have a small portion of area B grade beams that we have to pour just because of an expansion joint detail. Starting Thursday in area A, we're going to start doing underground plumbing. We're anticipating about two weeks of underground plumbing. Once we get through with that, then we'll start putting carton forms down, vapor barrier, and then get the slab poured hopefully in about three weeks from today, we'll have the first slab poured in area A. Most of our plumbing is in area A, so if we can get that out and behind us, we'll be looking pretty good. We'll be in good shape. I wish I had some better photos to show you guys because it really does look a lot better than it does right there. So you guys have any questions?
Similar question. What is your projected substantial completion date?
Still looking at January 24th, 24, contractual substantial completion. We got a little bit, we're a little bit behind where we should have been in area A and B, but it was always area C, the storm shelter that was driving the schedule. We're right on track with area C, the storm shelter. So it just amounts to we'll have more bodies in the building than we anticipated before.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions?
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we're going to remember to do our drone videos this time, right? We keep forgetting them. I know somebody asked about the tennis court screens. The screens facing the south weren't delivered when the, all the rest of the screens were installed. So those, they told us those should be here in the next week or two.
Dr. DeBose, one more question and I'm not sure who it's best to address to. So our new road that we have going from high school, middle school around to the Ag Building. We have the creek, the new bridge there. Who can tell us what we're doing with all of the mounds of dirt and redirecting the creek or what are we doing with the creek there?
So on the west side, over at the Canadian Cemetery, the high school location on the right side of the strange surface, they just about got all the drift-rats down, the rock rocks, still over there in the mountains. And then they're going to, 1970s, something like that, area. And then for the last part, we're going to be straight in there. While they're going to come over to the south side, the west side, that's the area.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do we have one more? Fine Arts? No. Fine. Okay, Jeff, you can talk fast while this is going with the new pictures. All right. Have we started irrigation on the fields yet? Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right.
Next, we're going to superintendent reports.
So the first is, we've got to talk about y'all's training hours.
As presiding officer of this meeting, I am pleased to announce that all Godly ISD trustees have exceeded their annual continued education requirements in all eight training areas.
So you guys are good to go. Our next is our FACE Committee. So I think that's Dr. Cottle, Family and Community Engagements.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board. I am excited to tell you a little bit about our Family and Community Engagement Committee, our FACE Committee. We want this to be the face of Godly. One of the things that has happened since the COVID shutdown and then our buildings were so full prior to the opening of this beautiful campus, we just feel like we had a little bit of disconnect between school and home. So one of my goals when I moved into this position was to build a family and community engagement. That's part of pillar four in our community-based accountability. And ideally, I wanted to just get a group together and get started this year. And I am so proud of how far we've come. We have an event scheduled for May 18th. We're having a Summer Palooza out at Legacy Elementary Campus in the evening and we're going to have food trucks and bounce houses and really just telling the community about all the things that are going on during the summer, from summer sports camps and VBS, just starting to bridge the gap between home and school. We really want to reconnect. We've got a great group of parents and grandparents and teachers and lots of people volunteered for our committee. And so we're getting our first event going and then we're working on creating little videos to tell the community about things that are happening and just trying to get the word out about what's going on in Godly and create a group of people who can be the face of Godly, who can talk to people in the community about what's happening within the schools and bring information back to us to help us get better in everything that we're doing. So I'm very proud of this group and I think we have some wonderful people that are working on the committee and we're just going to continue to get better. So any questions? Mr. Stevens came to our meeting today and we thoroughly enjoyed his input.
Yep. How many people do you have on your committee and does it comprise of staff and community? Like what's the breakdown?
Yes. So we have about 15 people right now. We had sent out a survey in the beginning of the school year and throughout the fall asking for people who wanted to serve on various committees. We had about seven or eight parents who had volunteered to come. Right now, we have five that have been coming consistently. Total, we have 15 people. About 10 of them, let me think, one, two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six of them are classroom teachers. The other four or five are ESL, GT, Ms. Evans, who's our Character and Leadership Development, Mr. Metter, our Communications Director. Our two co-chairs are Ms. Lowry and Ms. Caskey, who works at one of the elementary schools. So we have a great variety of people who represent every group. And then again, we have Ms. McAfee, Ms. Penny, Ms. Ketcherside, and Ms. Roy, who are all family members. And so we're really thrilled to have some, some great volunteers, people who are excited about volunteering and getting engaged with us. So it's been great. Did y'all have the same question? Yes. Okay. Any other questions? So more to come from the face of Godly. Yes.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Dr. Cottle. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Flood, we got something going on next month. Give us a little graduation update.
So we do have graduation. I was actually in all the senior classes today teaching government economics and it's 30 days away for them to graduate. So it is literally, we were talking about 13 years of your life and we're down to 30 days. So let's enjoy the final 30 before we get there and come to school every day so you have 100% attendance. So we do have plans that'll be on the football field. S&amp;P has really been generous working with us, making sure we have a plan. We're going to have a little walking path that people can park behind the CTE construction out in the cliche area where they have their lay-down yard. They'll move some of their stuff out of the way and people can walk to the field from that area. But then any handicap or main parking will be on the school side where our parking lot is, that they can park there. We'll have a couple shuttle buses running with the transportation department that people can park in front of the middle school on the grass area. And Pumpkin Patch has been really nice to allow us to have overflow parking at the Pumpkin Patch. So we'll have shuttle buses running there as well. So any handicap access or whatever can get through the school and walk down to the field. We have reserved two bleachers that are towable. They'll be dropped off on a trailer. They'll seat 300 apiece. So we'll have 600 seats of bleacher seating that people can sit on. And then we have rented 2,800 chairs for people to sit out on the chairs out behind, behind the audience or behind the students. And then we'll have our small section of teacher chairs, you know, on the, on the other side like we normally do. In case of severe weather, we'll make that decision, you know, a day or two before. We talked a long time ago that it's more important to stay on the same day for travel plans. So we will keep it on that day. We will just make a decision. The backup option is the Jeff D. Cody Arena in Cleveland where we'll have it indoors. We will have to limit tickets if we do that, where every kid will get at least 10 tickets to come to that, which still should incorporate most of the immediate family that kids can come and we'll live stream it so others can see it that way. Marty is working on live streaming it out at graduation that night from his deer blind again. The video board will be turned, so that'll be facing and working the way it should all work. So everything should be set up and ready to go to have graduation out there. All the seniors got their caps and gowns a couple of weeks ago, so they're ready to go on that front and they're just wrapping up their final things they need to do before we graduate next month. So questions or anything?
Do you have the lights to go out programmed for a specific time this year?
No, sir. I do not. They will not go out. They will, well, they're actually going to go out when Dr. Dear starts speaking, but I'm not supposed to say that out loud. So. Any other questions?
How many?
What's that? How many graduates? 181 in the graduating class. So this year, we're really excited about the fact that Lynx has now come back under the high school as far as a PMS reporting code goes. So any Lynx graduates does count in the graduating class. So we did do our top 10% the other day and that is 18 students this year. You always round down, you never round up. But Lynx has graduated, we have 150 at the high school and they've graduated 31 that we have counted. And I think they have a few more that'll be coming out before we get there. So the final number will be a little higher, but as of now, it's 181 in this graduating class. So 150 with us and 31 from Lynx. So.
Great. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Flood? All right. Thank you, Mr. Flood. That's in the superintendent reports now. We're into business items.
Now we'll consider consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
We have a motion made by Craig and second by Terry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Now, we'll consider adoption of a revised district policy update to FFAC local.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, can you fill us in?
All right. So, policy FFAC local, this is some added language. This is the policy where we have epinephrine, for example, asthma medication, things that we store just in the event of an emergency, in case we might need it. So, this revision would allow us to purchase and store opioid antagonist medications such as naloxone or Narcan. And our hope and intent is that it sits in a box and it expires and it's never used. But we believe that it's better to have it and need it than to need it and not have it. And so, this would be only administered by a nurse or trained staff. We will have this on each campus in the event that it is needed. And this would fall under, this would be part of our standing orders that would have to be, come from a licensed physician. So, the physician would put this under our standing orders and then we would be able to administer it. And so, if approved by you all tonight, then we would have to begin building our administrative regulations on how to go about purchasing and storing and our training and all of those things. So, we would have a minimum of approximately five people per campus. That'll be part of our administrative regulations that will build and determine how many, you know, we may need a few more at the high school or, you know, kind of what that looks like. So, we're working that out. So, yep, so we're recommending update to FFAC local.
Do you know what the normal time period before that medication expires? What's the shelf life of that, do you know?
I believe we looked at it and it was three years. Brian Hunt, yes, three years. Yes, ma'am.
Isn't there some funding for that somewhere possibly?
Potentially. So, potentially, we could, there could be, the medication could be donated and/or possible grants. I believe, Brian Hunt, wasn't it, if we had to purchase it, wasn't it about $100 per? So. So, even if we had to pay for it just out of pocket, the expense is not great. But we don't anticipate that.
Okay, one more. And I know that once this is approved, we'll be looking at building the protocols for that. But I would assume that they would be located in the main campus of the high school and then maybe in the CTE?
The actual medication?
Yeah.
Yes, so we would have different locations, because it's spread out, you know, so Ag, you know, the main building, CTE. Yes, multiple locations. So, that'll be part of what we will designate where, you know, the nurse's office, you know, so storage. All of those things will all be part of the administrative regulations.
I also think the city accepted or approved some funding for that.
Okay.
So, you might check with Godly, City, Godly and see. If they have extra, maybe they'll share it.
Maybe just.
Will there be, do we anticipate any cost of the training for our staff and nurses?
I am not clear on that. So, yes, so that, you know, cost, possible cost requirements for the training and how extensive that training is, we'll begin that process and that could possibly determine how many people we actually have on each campus that would be certified to administer.
If this is approved, then would this be in place before the start of next school year?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the district policy update to FFAC local as presented and recommended. Second.
I have a motion by Terry, a second by Marissa. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, we'll consider approval of engagement letter from Godly ISD Financial Auditor Snow Garrett Williams.
Yes, this is just our annual renewal for the financial auditors that we had. I remember, recall, last year was the first year that we used Snow Garrett Williams as our financial auditors. And I think everybody was pleased with their performance, with the information they gave at the board meeting in January. So, I would just like to consider approval for those auditors for the current school year. It's for the 22, 23 audit.
I move the board to approve the engagement letter from GISD Financial Auditor Snow Garrett Williams as recommended and presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Krista and a second by Terry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Now, we'll consider approving the MOU with Tarleton State University for the 2023, 2024 Tarleton.
Good evening, Board. Tarleton State University has a new program that is really exciting. They have started dual enrollment for four courses in their initial offering. College Algebra, Pre-Calculus, and then two Agriculture courses. Some of the really cool features of this program, it's modeled after the Onramps courses that the University of Texas offers. Students are dual enrolled. They can choose to accept or reject the college credit that they earn. So, if they take a dual credit course and realize it isn't the grade that they want to reflect on their college transcript, they can actually decline to accept that credit. Additionally, the grade that the student receives in the college course can be different than what they receive in the high school course. So, the curriculum is provided by Tarleton. Our teachers will be trained on it and administer the curriculum and assessments in our classes. But if we choose as high school staff to weight the tests and daily grades differently or to administer additional daily grades, we can do that. We can curve a test or assignment for the high school grade on the course. Our teachers will receive training on the curriculum and the tests. And they will receive a $500 stipend from Tarleton to administer these courses to our students. The other really, really exciting thing is that this takes pieces of the Dallas Promise and actually gives these courses to our free and reduced students at no charge. So, our free and reduced students could take college credit without incurring any kind of costs. Additionally, our students who are not free and reduced will be able to take the courses for $149. And some of you have students in college right now. And if you don't, you know what a college course costs and it's not $149. It's quite more significant than that. So, signing this MOU with Tarleton for their Tarleton Today program allows us to get in on their initial offering that includes the free and reduced costs for our students and provides training to our teachers for free along with a $500 stipend. So, our recommendation is that we enter this MOU to provide this additional amazing opportunity to our kiddos and really amp up the rigor in what we're doing in those four courses. And really excited about the opportunity for Ag students to earn dual credit as well. Any questions?
Well, there, you, so there's four courses. This will all start in the fall of 23.
Yes, we, if approved tonight, we would go back to students that are enrolled in the courses that are aligned to the high school credit side. So, College Algebra is aligned to Algebra II. The Vet course is aligned to our Vet Med program. Animal Science is aligned to Animal Science. We would go back and pull the students enrolled in those courses specifically, give them the details of the program and then, of course, offer it to anyone who did not sign up for those courses and let them change schedules if they chose to enter into a College Algebra or an Ag course that's dual credit.
So, if they elect to decline the college credit, that doesn't mean they're declining the high school credit?
Correct. And another benefit of the course is that we don't have to pull them out into a separate section. Students can be in the course who are not paying for the dual credit course if they're not free and reduced. So, we can have dual enrollment and just traditional high school students in the same class period, which provides a lot of flexibility in when and how these courses are offered.
How many teachers do you perceive?
Right now, we're looking at three. I visited with Mr. Flood. Our initial thoughts on this are to offer College Algebra across from the statistics course that's dual enrollment right now. They're each a semester long. And then, Ms. Lofton and Ms. Borje, we have visited with them about offering the two Agriculture courses. They align to courses that they've historically been teaching. And they're excited about that.
I know recently, we, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Flood, stopped letting sophomores take dual credit courses. Is that still correct? Okay, so will sophomores and freshmen, if they are eligible to take the courses that are being offered, will they be eligible to take these Tarleton Today courses? Or are we going to only offer them to upperclassmen?
That's not something we have specifically visited about, but I think if they're enrolled in that course, then.
If I remember correctly, the thought process there was that a sophomore may not be quite ready for a college-level class. And then, if they don't do well in a dual-credit class, then they've got a grade or a GPA that's gonna follow them through college. Whereas, this kind of takes that off the table because they will be able to decline the college credit if they want.
Some of these have prereqs, kids will still have to give, so freshmen are really difficult to get to that level. Sophomores have more of a chance, but they're just prereqs, they're gonna have to work their way up to even make statistics. They're gonna have to go through all the people that get to that level. The nice thing about parent stats with College Algebra, College Algebra is both are Algebra II classes and I do. Some of those kids, you know, are in the same level, making that one. But that's really a different team of people. They're just, the nature of the content is always a little advanced in these courses that they just have to.
So, sophomores don't usually take Algebra II?
Some of them, yeah.
So, the sophomores, because they don't have the prereqs, won't be allowed to take these courses?
They could, but they would have to, if the stats are limited, the stats that you have, they're gonna be successful in this course. Some of those.
So, for the majority of students, there will still not be an opportunity for dual-credit or Tarleton Today or any type of advanced academics until we get further along?
Yeah, we're hoping this expands and probably keep expanding the program, so kids can be more earlier.
I look forward to that.
Make a motion to approve the MOU with Tarleton State University for the 23, 24 Tarleton Today program.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Craig and a second by Terry. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, Board.
Hey, Ms. Nix, thank you for fostering that relation with Tarleton. Just a side note, all, the other day, I was at the Fine Arts Band banquet and I believe there was six students that were planning to go to Tarleton. So, having that relation with Tarleton is phenomenal for opportunities for our kids. So, thanks for fostering that.
Absolutely. And I told him that he couldn't increase the course offerings soon enough for us to engage in what we are partnering with our students for.
And we do have a great relationship with the head, the point person at Tarleton, so we anticipate that. More to come.
Now, we'll discuss construction delivery methods.
All right, we've got Mr. Marty Massey, who's just gonna give us some information over construction delivery methods just to kind of bring us back, just to revive our memories a little bit.
Well, glad to be here again, see you guys, talk about this. But I do want to say, I'm really glad that I didn't have to follow that video, because my mother was a teacher. And she's, she was a government teacher. And so, you know how government teachers are, and that would have explained to you about my mom. Anyway, that was a great video, I really enjoyed it. So, thanks for sharing. So, talking about delivery methods. There's five listed here, we're gonna talk primarily about three. So, we're gonna talk about competitive seal proposal, we're gonna talk construction management risk, and we're gonna talk construction management agency. So, on the, on the competitive seal proposal, it's similar to what y'all done out at the elementary, where that you deal, you have the, you hire the architect, you design the building. It gets totally finished in design and then it's put on the street. You select a contractor, they go to work, they hire all the subs, and they basically build a building just like what we saw here at Pleasant View. We did do something a little bit different here. You guys hired a contractor to do the pre-construction services. So, we had that while we were going through design, whereas normally, you wouldn't have that. You wouldn't hire that group whenever that you do this. You, the, right now, the tough thing about competitive seal proposal is with all the stuff that's coming up in the bond election, that you guys have stuff in there and everybody else does too. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of contractors and a lot of clients that's having a difficult time getting sub participation. And you'll hear that more and more leading up to May 6th. We've seen a lot of it lately. The other thing that's going on with that is, you, the right time to use that is, so basically, that was what I was talking about from as far as the flow chart goes. So, that you got, so the pros and cons of that is you have somewhat flexibility with subcontractors, but not as much as you do with CM at risk. And so, you, normally, it'll be a hard bid, the contractor will select the subs. They're more than likely gonna go with the lowest sub that's out there because it's based around fee mainly. You also get the opportunity where, with the competitive seal proposal to where that you, that you can interview them and you can base this on those requirements as well. But primarily, you're looking at low price. And that's where that, with that delivery method, you get the most competitive number. But the problem you get to right now is with what we've seen here with schedule and with delivery of materials and stuff, going with that method, you're, whenever you have a tight schedule, it's, that's a difficult delivery method because you, we're, right now, there's things like, this project may have an 18-month schedule now for CSP, but we've got transformers and gear and everything else that's out there that's out 24 months. So, that's another problem that you have with going with CSP. On larger renovation projects and stuff, it's really difficult with trying to get materials and stuff. And the way that that stuff is all phased, it's really difficult with that too. If you have, if we're not dealing with everything that's going on in the market today, you know, this is a, this would have been a perfect project for that. But with everything that was going on with COVID, everything that was going on with material and with the labor shortages and everything, it just makes it really tough. So, that's kind of the pros and cons for competitive seal proposal. Going into construction manager at risk, what you're doing over at the high school right now, you have a project with S&amp;P, you have a project with Reader. So, that's the delivery method that we've used over there. Some of the, the flow chart works where that you've got design and you hire designer and you hire the construction manager. And we try to hire them both at the same time, so that they're able to do the budgeting stuff that we need to do during the design. So, this is where you really have the flexibility of working with subs, the pre-construction service that you get and the budgeting that we're able to get and trying to maintain that budget with what we're seeing now is really critical. The other thing that's really critical with what's going on right now is us looking at things that, once that you've selected your CM and there's things that we need to be purchasing ahead of time while we're in design, once that we get to a point in the design where that we know exactly what those materials are gonna be, we're able to go ahead, we can order those materials, and we can have those so that whenever that we need them, they're here. And again, they're. And again, there's just, there's a number of things out there. I use the electrical stuff as an example, but we saw what happened on roofing. We saw what happened on glass, and we see things that seem to be kind of leveling off, but then soon as it kind of levels off, it spikes again. So that's really the biggest benefit of being able to deal with CM is being able to really get the budget right. And a lot of the stuff that we saw going on on this particular project, it was just difficult. It was hard to be able to know what was going to happen because we saw such a change from month to month to month with things. We saw it happen here where that we were going to have glass and frames, and they gave us a date, and we, oh, two weeks before that it was supposed to deliver. All of a sudden, it was like, well, no, now it's going to be three months before you get it. And there's just so many of those things that's really difficult to that you need, the things that we're learning now with what's happened over the past two years, we're able to try to put those things into place so that we don't have it happen again. So whenever you're looking at large renovation projects and stuff, it's like what we're dealing with over at the high school. I mean, that's really the right time to use it. Right now, if you have a school that has to open on a given date, which you guys always do, I mean, unless that you can really get started early, where you got that cushion, it's nearly impossible right now to be able to use CSP and be able to open that school whenever that you need to open it. So the last one is construction management agent. So this one is one of the least-used methods that is out there in especially the education industry. There's over 1,015 districts in Texas, and there's maybe 1% uses this delivery method. So the, so the basic of the flow chart is real similar to that it is at CM at risk, but at CM agent, the construction manager has zero risk, and all the risk is on the district. And that's the biggest, that's the biggest con that's out there is with, especially what's going on with the market today. It's so unstable, and we have seen so many large subcontractors and suppliers that have, that's gone bankrupt over the past 18 months that whenever that you, when you use this, basically, you have to have a larger staff because instead of writing, as you do today, one check each month to each one of your contractors out there, you do that at prime time, you'll be writing 80 checks because you have to write checks for every one of those subcontractors. So that takes, that takes more effort on that part of it. But the risk is the bigger one out there, is all the risk is on you. You hold all the contracts, they hold no risk. Your contract goes down, you're at risk for that contractor. And part of the problem is even if you guys, as the client, go out and actually do use this process, and you do decide that you're going to go out and bond these subs, one of the problems, and we're seeing it right now on this project with that 14 pieces of glass. It's held up, those 14 pieces of glass are held up because of the bonding company. And the bonding company has a certain duration that they have the right to go out, and whenever that they take over a project, they have four weeks to go out there and advertise, and then get, select their contractor, and then get their materials and stuff in place. And that's another thing that, I mean, you're looking at risk on as far as the schedule goes. They say that they own the schedule, but if those contracts, the subcontractors are the one that's going into fault, ultimately, you hold that responsibility. And talking to, for the, from the architect's standpoint, whenever that you use that delivery method, the architect is responsible for reviewing a whole lot more than they do under either one of those other delivery methods because they're reviewing every submitter, they're reviewing every payout, all of those. Right now, on those other two delivery methods, the architect reviews the contractor's payout, approves it, and sends it to you to be done. Now then, they have to review every one of those subcontractors payouts before they're sent to you. So that's the three, the delivery methods. Like I say, they're all out there, just with what we see right now is, you know, I come to you and try to tell you what my opinion is, is what I'm seeing that's going on out there and what's the best thing for Godly. And right now, you've had some challenges over at Phase Two. With that particular schedule and the stuff that we're seeing going on, but then you have stuff that's going on on Three and stuff that went on on the high school. So you've dealt with that deliverable before, and you've seen that deliverable work the way that it's supposed to work. And I mean, that's, there's places and times for, I would say, the two delivery methods, CSP and CMR. There was times that I was talking about, hey, right before COVID, I was telling every client that I was working with, you know, we were getting ready when CSP was the way to go. During COVID, up and from August until December, that was the prime time because contractors had burned up all their backlog, and they were basically just going out there and taking CSP work for cost just so they could get the revenue for that year. So there's a time and a place, and it's just still a tough time now.
Any other questions for Marty? That was just a little information for us. Okay, Marty, appreciate it very much. And then I think our next is enclosed.
We'll now go into closed session.
the 2023-24 school year.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of all teaching support professional staff contracts for 2324 school year as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Marissa. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes.
Our motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Craig to adjourn at 9:35 p.m.